Welcome back to the final study session video. This will be the practice exam for chapter 12, 13, and 16. Before we begin, I want to say thank you for putting up with me for an entire quarter. And I'm just imagining that my and Si over here are you guys, and I'm the guy in the middle. Just trying to get all these questions done. So let's look at question one. A mutual fund returns 14%. If the risk-free rate is 2%, and the beta of the fund is 1.6, what is the implied risk premium? Well, as we know, we need to figure out what we know in the question. In this case, we know that the big R is 0.14 because the market, the mutual funds return is 14%, 14% expressed in a decimal is 0.14. The risk-free rate, otherwise known as RF, is equal to 0.02 because in the question it says risk rate is 2% and the beta is equal to 1.6. You could do 1.60, but in reality it's 1.6 because they mean the same thing. In addition, we now need to plug it into the formula. R is equal to RF plus beta multiplied by RM minus RF. However, we know that RM minus RF can be rewritten as this. Market risk premium. Now that we have this, we can plug it in. And it'll give us, oops. And it'll give us 0.14 is equal to 0.02 plus 1.6 multiplied by well, MRP. The reason we're looking, the whole point of this question is to look for MRP and not anything else. From here, you can do a slash solve equation if you're using a scientific or graphing calculator. But if you do, we can do it by hand anyways. So it'll be 0.14 subtracted by 0.02 divided by 1.6. And that should give us, assuming my calculator is still worse, 0.075 or 7.5%. A stock has a beta of 1.5, the market risk premium is 7%, and the risk-free rate is 2%. What is the lowest return the company should accept on a new investment? So in this case, we are looking for R. So what do we know? We know that we are want R. And we are given RF is equal to 0.02 because in the question it says that the risk-free rate is 2%. We know that the beta is equal to 1.5. And we know that the market risk premium is equal to 7% or 0.07. Now that we have this information, we just have to use the same equation that was used up here and plug it in. So R is equal to 0.02 plus beta, which will be 1.5 multiplied by 0.07. Now that we have this, we plug this one into a calculator. Or if you want to be brave and do it by hand, I don't, I don't suggest you do that because that takes too much time. You will get 0.125, which in turn becomes 12.5%. Question three says the stock's beta measures the, and then it says what? And in this case, the stock's beta measures the sensitivity of the stocks' returns to those of the market portfolio. Good. We are up next going to do question four. And this one is deceptively hard, but it's really not. It's just that there's a lot of steps involved with it. An investor divides his or her portfolio into three equal parts with one part in treasury bills, one part in the market index, and one part in a mutual fund with beta 1.5. What is the beta of the investor's overall portfolio? Okay, so this is dickish because it gives you what you need to know, but it doesn't directly tell you what you need to know without first having to do some logic problems without it. So we know in the question that the weight in risk-free assets is equal to 1 divided by 3 because the portfolio is divided into three equal parts. We know that the beta of risk-free assets, so beta F is equal to 0 because there is risk-free, there is no risk-free. Then we know that the weight of market is equal to 1 over 3 as it's evenly divided into three sections. And we know that the beta of the market is equal to 1. From here, we know that the weight of mutual fund, otherwise known as WR. I know it's really weird to use R, but it's just better when you use mutual fund, just use R, it'll save you time. And since it's divided into three equal parts, we know that it's 1 over 3 again. Afterwards, we know that the beta of the mutual fund is equal to 1.5 because it's given to us in the question. One part in the market index, which is why the beta of the market is 1. Now that we know this, okay, we noticed something. And that thing that we notice is the fact that the beta of the overall portfolio is the weighted average of individual assets beta. To explain, we need to write the formula. We know that beta of portfolio is equal to 1 over 3 multiplied by 0 plus. Oh, sorry, I need to give you the formula first, otherwise this is going to look really weird. So we know that beta of the portfolio is equal to the weight in risk-free assets multiplied by the beta in risk-free assets plus the weight of the market multiplied by the beta of the market plus the weight of the mutual fund multiplied by the beta of the mutual fund. Now that we have this formula, we can just plug it in, which it will equal this, 1 over 3 multiplied by 0 plus, since they're all 1.1 over 3, I think you guys can follow along really quickly. And you already know what this one's beta is, this one's beta is 1 plus the final line should be 1 over 3 multiplied by 1.5 because that is the beta of the mutual funds. And then we plug this into a calculator. And we will get that the beta of investors' overall portfolio is 0.83. Indeed. Up next is this question. Estimate the stock's beta based on the following information. Month 1 equals to stock plus, equals stock plus 1.5% market plus 1.1% stock. Month 2, stock is 2%, market stock is 1.4%. Months 3 has a stock of 2.5% and the market is 2%. So how do we do this one? Well, first we need to get the R, we need to get the month 1 and month 2. Okay, so month 1. We know that the stock return is equal to 0.015 because the stock return is equal to 1.5%. And we know that the market return, or RM, is equal to 0.011 because the market return in the, in the question is 11%. Therefore, we have to plug it into this nice little equation that I think you're all quite familiar with at this point. R is equal to RF plus beta multiplied by RM minus RF. Okay, now that we have this section here, we can plug it in. So R is equal to, oh, my bad. We already had R. 0.015 is equal to RF plus beta multiplied by 0.011 minus RF. This is a very important one that we are actually going to save. So we're not going to be erasing this until after the question is done. But now what we need to do is the exact same thing for month 2, basically we should. So for month 2, we know that the stock return is equal to 2% or 0.02. And the market return is equal to 1.4% or 0.014. Therefore, we have to plug it into the equation again, and the equation thankfully is laid out right here. And we'll know that it is going to be 0.02 is equal to RF plus beta multiplied by 0.014 subtracted by RF. Now that we have this, we know that to find the stock's beta, we have to use what is called, not substitution, it's the other one. You know the thing you learn in high school about how to solve for a variable with two equations? Well, we're going to be using the addition-subtraction method to do that. If you all took Algebra 1 in high school, you all know how to do this. So we need month 2 minus month 1. We take this equation here. Well, let's use the month 2 equation first. 0.02 is equal to RF plus beta multiplied by 0.014 minus RF because I wrote this a bit too big. Subtracted by, open parentheses, so you know that everything's being subtracted by it. 0.015 equals to RF plus beta multiplied by 0.011 minus RF. So now that we're subtracting by both sides, that was way too long. We subtract on both sides and we get 0.005. Yes. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. 0.02 minus 0.015 should give me 0.05. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. Now that we have that, we can continue with this. This is equal to RF. But since the two RFs are being subtracted from up here, they just cancel out. And we are left with beta multiplied by 0.014 minus RF, which in turn will be minus beta multiplied by 0.011 minus RF. Then, by means of multiplying through similar coefficients, we can rewrite this as 0.005 is equal to beta multiplied by 0.014. Oh, and it'll be minus beta like this. Minus RF. Oh, there is no minus in here. And then we subtract, but since we're subtracting, the entire thing is negative. The 0.011 minus negative RF, so in this case it'll be plus RF. What that means is that the RFs themselves will cancel and we are left with 0.005 equals to beta multiplied by 0.003. From here, we are trying to solve for beta. Therefore, we know it's going to be 0.005 divided by 0.005, 0.003, which in turn is equal to 1.667, and this is rounded up obviously. Therefore, the answer in the multiple choice case is that the beta is greater than 1. If a security plot below the security market line it is, then the answer is a multiple choice question, offering too little return to justify its risk. That's easy enough. The next one. If a stock consistently goes down, which is up in this case, by 1.6% when the market portfolio goes down, which is up by this, in this case, by 1.2%, then its beta equals what? Let me write it, please. Good. Is equal to change in stock return divided by the change in market return. Therefore, we know to solve this, we have to take 1.6 divided by 1.2. I know that these are in percentages, but when you move the decimal over, it's going to be the same thing. And we will get 1.33. And that is the beta for a stock that constantly goes down by 1.6% when the market portfolio goes up by 1.2%. Macro events only are reflected in the performance of the market portfolio because why? And the answer is the specific risks have been diversified away. Another multiple choice question. The basic tenants of the capem is the stock's expected risk premium should be what? And in this case, the stock's expected risk premium should be proportionate to the stock's beta when the overall market experiences a decline of 8%. 8% investors with portfolios of aggressive stocks will probably experience portfolio what? And the answer is losses greater than 8%. What is the beta of a three-stock portfolio, including 25% of stock A with a beta of 0.9, a 40% of stock B with a beta of 1.05, and 35% of stock C with a beta of 1.73? Oh, that the formula is that portfolio beta. That was the exact opposite way to write that. That the portfolio beta is equal to the sum of the weight times beta. Now that we know this, we can answer the question. First, we got to look at the stock A. So in this case, stock A will be 0.25 because that is the 25% of stock A multiplied by the beta of 0.9 plus 0.9, my bad, 0.4 because it's 40% of stock B multiplied by the 1.05 because that is the beta plus 35% of stock C, so 0.35 multiplied by 1.73 because that is the beta. And when you put that into your calculator, you should get 1.2505. But since the question only asks you for two decimals, it'll be 1.25. Easy enough. And that is the end of the chapter 12 practice exam. But don't click off just yet. We have the chapter 13 practice exam to do right after. Be right back. Chapter 13 practice quiz, we're one-third of the way through this. Just got to finish this exam and this video and you'll be able to enjoy your summer at Koneka over here. Let's start with question 1. A firm is 40% financed by debt with a yield to maturity of 8.5%. The equity has a beta of 1.3. The market risk premium is 8.4% and the risk-free rate is 3.8%. What is the firm's WACC if the tax rate is 34%? Very well, let's start this question off strong. First, we need to determine what we know, as always. And in this case, we know that 40% is financed by debt. We know that the yield to maturity, so YTM, is equal to 8.5%. We know that the equity of beta is equal to 1.3. And we know that the market risk premium is equal to 8.4%. In addition, we know that RF, otherwise known as the risk-free rate, is equal to 3.8%. And finally, we know that the tax rate is equal to 34%. This is a multi-step problem, let's get it done. We need to use this equation first. R, sorry about that. R is equal to RF plus beta times MRP. Well, since we already know what they are, we just have to plug them in. And it'll be 3.8 plus 1.3 times 8.4. And I'm keeping it all in the percentage form because it doesn't really change the outcome and it just saves time as a whole. Now that we have this, all we got to do is plug it in and we should get 14.72%. Let me just check my calculator really quickly. Yes, we're correct. Up next, we need the after-tax cost of debt. Now, we know that the after-task cost of debt is equal to the yield to maturity, YTM, multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate. Now that we have this formula known, all we have to do is plug it in. The yield to maturity is going to be 0.085. Hey, it looks like a heart. Multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate, and in this case, the tax rate is going to be 0.34. Now that we know this, we plug it into our calculator and we should get 0.0561 is equal to 5.61%. And I got a spam call. Wonderful. Ignore that, we'll be fine. After this, we need to get the weight of equity. Or whoa. Which in this case is 100% minus the percent financed by debt. And we know from earlier that the percent financed by debt is 40%. Therefore, we do 100% minus 40% and we should get 60% unless my math is wrong. I doubt it. Now that we have all of this known, we can finally calculate the weighted average cost of capital, otherwise known as WACC. And that is the respective costs multiplied by the respective weight. The respective costs can be calculated as such. They are the, the R multiplied by the weight financed by debt. And then the respective weights are the after-tax cost of debt multiplied by the percent financed by debt. Wait. Hold on. Oh, my bad, it's not weight financed by debt. I'm so sorry. It's the weight of equity. I think this is why we, this is why we write it everything down, so that we can check any mistakes. Hit the weight of equity. multiplied by the weight of equity, which is 0.6. Wait a minute. Thinking, need to make sure that this is correct. Weight of equity 0.6, yes, it is, yes, it is. Multiplied by 0.6 plus the next one, which is going to be 0.0561 multiplied by 0.4. And in this case, if we plug that into a calculator, we should get 0.11076, which in turn becomes 11.076%. However, I know that the question asks for you to round it to two decimals, so it will become 11.08%. And that is how you find the weighted average cost of capital if the tax rate is 3.4% under this firm's stipulations. Up next is question 2. A firm is financed 55% by common stock, 10% by preferred stock, and 35% by debt. The required return is 15% on the common, 10% on the preferred, and 8% on the debt. If the tax rate is 3, is 35%, what is the WACC? Since it already gives us everything, we know that WACC, the weighted average cost of capital, is equal to the weight of common stock multiplied by the cost of common stock plus the weight of preferred stock multiplied by the cost of preferred stock plus the weight of debt multiplied by the pre-tax cost of debt. So pre-tax cost of debt multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate. Now that we have this formula here, we can write it out as followed. 0.3 multiplied by 0.1. You get the, wow, I, that was a mistake. Sorry about that. Let me check back the numbers because I think I misremembered the numbers. 10%, 55%, 35%, 13%, 10%, 8%. Okay, okay. Now that I remember the numbers, it's gonna be 0.55 multiplied by 0.14 plus 0.1 multiplied by 0.1 plus multiplied by 0.08 multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate, and in this case, the tax rate is 0.35. Put that into our calculator, we should get 0.1107, which in turn becomes 11.07%. Calculate a firm's WACC given the total value of the firm is $2,600,000, of which is debt, pre-tax cost is 10%, and the cost of equity is 15%. This firm pays no taxes. In a sense, it's owned by the rich. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So we know that the total value of the firm is equal to $2 million. Afterwards, we know that the value of debt is equal to $600,000. In addition, we now need to get the value of equity. Value of equity is equal to the total value of the firm subtracted by the value of debt. Now that we know that, we need to plug it in. We should get 6, my apologies, 2 million minus 600,000. And that will give us 1,400,000 in dollars. Now that we have the value of equity, we can start getting the weight of debt, which in turn is the 600,000 divided by the total value of the firm, so 2 million, which in this case is equal to 0.3. We need to get the value, the weight of the equity, so V, which is equal to weight of equity, or WHOA, is equal to 14 mil, 1.4 mil divided by 2 mil. And that should give us 0.7. Here's how you can check if you made a mistake or not. If these two numbers add up to 1, most likely you're right. If they don't, go back and check. Now that we have these two numbers, the 0.3 and 0.7, we can finally calculate the weighted average cost of capital, which in this turn, which in this case, is equal to the weight of debt multiplied by the cost of debt plus the weight of equity multiplied by the cost of equity. Meaning that it is going to be 0.3 because that is what we got when we found the weight of debt, multiplied by the cost of debt, which should be given to us in the question. Pre-tax cost of debt is 10% or 0.1, I bet. Plus the weight of equity, which in this case is 0.7, multiplied by the cost of equity, which if we look back here, is 15%, otherwise known as 0.15. And once we plug this into our calculator, we should get 0.135, which in turn becomes 13.5%. That is your weighted average cost of capital for this firm. Question number four. If the tax rate is 35%, what is the cost of preferred stock that sells for $10 per share and pays a 1.2 dividend? In dollars, of course. Well, you see, how should I say this? This question is kind of mean because we need to know first the price is equal to $10. And then we know that the dividend is equal to $1.2. Now that we know that, we need to get the cost of the preferred stock. And in this case, it is going to be 10 times 1.2, which will give us $12. Dollars. Hold on. Let me just check my math really quickly. It's $12, but for some reason, the question asks for it in percentages. Let me just correct that. It's supposed to be in dollars. I don't know why it says percentages. Pays $1 dividend. Yeah, that's correct. So it's $12, but for some reason, it asks it for you in a percentage like this. That's really weird. And it's also, I don't, also, it is technically right if you do 1.2 divided by 10. That should give you 12%. That's a really weird, so I guess the question wants you to do it like this. But it's asking for the cost, so it should be $12? I'm not, I'm not sure why the question is worded this way. And also, I would like for you to note that the tax rate is a red herring. Okay. I'm gonna have to talk to the professor about this one because that one really doesn't make sense. The capital structure of the CR Corporation includes bonds valued at $5,500 and common stock valued at $11,000. If CR has an after-tax cost of debt 6% and common of, and cost of common stock of 16%, what is its weighted average cost of capital? We first need to figure out what we know. And what we know is that the price of the preferred, I mean, we know that the total value, you know, that total value is equal to the sum of bonds and stocks. Now that we know that, we can start solving for it. It'll be 5.5K plus 11K, which in turn will give us It's simple enough. Now that we know what the total value is, we can now find the weighted average cost of capital, which in this case is equal to the respective weights, investment weights plus the respective costs. respective cost. Now that we know that, we can rewrite this as the following. WACC is equal to open parentheses, I mean, open bracket, open parentheses, value of bonds divided by the total value multiplied by the after-tax cost of debt close parentheses, multiply, I mean, plus the value of stock divided by the total value multiplied again by the cost of common stock. And we close the parentheses, close brackets. All right. Now that we have that, we can start solving for everything. You'll just plug everything in like so. 5,500 divided by 16,500. This will be in parentheses, multiplied by 0.06. The 0.06 in the question is the after-tax cost of debt close parentheses plus open parentheses, open parentheses, 11,000 divided by 16,500 multiplied by 0.16. You'll plug that into your calculator and you will get 0.12667. But since it asks for it in a percentage form and it only gives you space for two decimals, you shall get 12.67%. Amazing. Few more left for this one and then we'll do the next one. Weighted average cost of capital for a firm with 65-35 debt equity split, 8% pre-tax cost of debt, and 15% cost of equity, followed by a 35% tax rate is To solve this question, we need to find, we need to use the formula for WACC that we used last time. So weighted, let me change the color so you know it's a different question. Let's go with some very nice green. The weighted average cost of capital is equal to open bracket DV multiplied by 1 minus tax rate close parentheses multiplied by return on debt close parentheses, close bracket plus open bracket, open parentheses EV divided by multiplied by return of equity close parentheses and close bracket. Now that we know this formula, we can start solving. We just need to plug the answers in. So we will open bracket. First, DV in this case is going to be 0.65 because the 0.65 is given with us in the 65 debt equity split, and since we're using debt first, it's 65 multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate. The tax rate in this question is 0.35 multiplied by the return on debt, which in this case, it says 8% pre-tax cost of debt, which in this case is 0.08 close parentheses, close bracket, plus in that section, open parentheses, the open bracket, and it's going to be EV is already given to us. It is 0.35 multiplied by the return on equity. And it says 15% is the cost of equity, so 0.15 close parentheses, close bracket. We then plug this into our calculator and we will get 8.0863, which in turn is equal to Simple enough. The next question is a multiple choice question, so I'm just going to write up the answer and not confuse you. To calculate the present value of a business, the firm's free cash flows should be discounted at the firm's what? And the answer is your WACC, your weighted average cost of capital. Simple enough. And you know what? I'll do the other open, sorry about that. I'll do the other multiple choice question, which is this one, and then I'll do the final two math ones right away. To calculate the present value of a business, oops, Ctrl-Z. Ctrl, copy, Ctrl, paste. Why is debt financing said to include a tax shield for the company? And the reason is simple. Taxable income is reduced by the amount of interest. Simple enough. Next question is going to be this one. What is the expected growth rate in dividends for a firm in which shareholders require an 18% rate of return and dividend yield is 10%? That's, actually, really isn't one. We know that the required rate of return or, yeah, or triple R is equal to the dividend yield plus the expected rate of growth in dividends. In this case, we are given triple R, which is the required rate of return. In this case, 0.18 is equal to the dividend yield, and the dividend yield is given to us in the problem, 0.1 because it is 10% plus the expected rate of growth in dividends. I don't know why I wrote this complicated thing. I could just write G. To do this one, we need to do 0.18 minus 0.1 is equal to G. G is equal to 0.08, which in turn is 8%. Onto the final question for the Chapter 13 homework. Not homework, practice exam. XYZ Company issues common stock at a price of $25 a share. The firm expects to pay a dividend of $2.20 a share next year. If the dividend is expected to grow at 2.5% annually, what is XYZ's cost of common equity? All right. Let's use a different color. In this case, we're going to be using a nice dark red. What do we know? All right. We know that the price is equal to $25. We know that DIV at T is equal to 1 is 20, this is $2.2, so $2.20. And finally, we know that the growth, or G, is 0.025. Now that we know this, we can Now that we know this, we can calculate the cost of equity. Cost of equity is equal to the dividend at 1 divided by the price multiplied by 100 plus 2.5%. Let me just check to make sure that's correct. Yes. This will give us 11.3%. That is the cost of common equity annually, I believe. No, it's not annually, just the cost of common equity, that's the percentage. Chapter 16, practice quiz. Only 33.3% left of this thing and we're done. Afterwards, we just have to study and then we pass our tests and everything is good. For this one, I'm going to be doing all of the multiple choice questions first and then I'm going to be doing all the math questions. So starting with the first multiple choice question. According to MM proposition 2, as the firm's debt-equity ratio decreases, what happens? And the answer is that the required rate of return on equity decreases. I'm not a stenographer. Do not expect 300 words per minute. That'd be insane. The second question. According to MM's proposition 2, the expected return on equity is equal to the expected return on assets for a firm. What does that mean? Well, we know that the formula for this is return on equity is equal to return on assets plus debts divided by equity multiplied by return on assets minus return on debt. What this means is that this is false because the statement in the question does not line up with the actual formula that we are trying to follow. Question 3. According to MM, debt restructuring will not change the firm's overall value. True. They are only restructuring, not paying off debts. Up next, this question. MM's proposition 1, or the debt irrelevance proposition, states that the value of a firm is unaffected by its capital infrastructure, by its capital structure. And the answer is true. The reason being, MM proposition 1 states that is irrelevant in capital structure using a set of assumptions of no taxes, no transaction costs, no bankruptcy, or symmetry of information. Did I really misspell assumption? Uh, how does it point in? Next question. MM's proposition 2 states that the expected return on asset increases as the debt-equity ratio increases. False. It does not say that anywhere. You can look, it's not there. Studies suggest that the indirect costs of bankruptcy are typically of a significant magnitude, and the answer is true. That's what the studies say. That's not what I can say. If the study says it, it's true. If it doesn't, it's false. The trade-off theory of capital structure suggests that the firms have an optimal level of debt, and the answer is true. The benefit of an interest tax shield is captured by the equity shareholders. That is true as well. Two more multiple choices and then we get to do the fun math stuff. I know, I love doing the math. But we gotta do the multiple choice, okay? He can ask these on the test. And if he asks them the test and we don't know them, we're screwed. When there are no taxes, the capital market function well. The market value of a company does not depend on its capital, its structure. True. And the final multiple choice question that isn't solvable specifically, which one of these is not underlying assumption of MM proposition 1? And the answer is that taxes remain at their current non-zero levels. These are not assumptions, okay? This is not an assumption. The other ones are assumptions, but that requires you to have the practice quiz open. There. That is all the multiple choice done. Now let's get to the fun stuff. Copy, paste. A firm has perpetual debt of $10 million at an interest rate of 7%. What is the percent value of the interest tax shield if the tax rate is 35%? All right. To get this, we need to know what we know. We know what we know is that it's a $10 million in debt perpetually. In addition, we know that interest rate is equal to 0.07 and we know that tax rate is equal to 0.35. Now that we know that, we need to calculate the present value of interest tax shield. So present value of interest tax shield. And the formula for that is that it is the tax rate multiplied by the value of debt. Okay. Rewriting that, we should get 0.35 multiplied by the value of debt, and the value of debt is $10 million. And that should give us $3,500,000. And that is the present value of the interest tax shield. Simple enough. Next one. Assume a firm is financed with 30% debt on which it pays interest of 9%. What is the expected return on delay if the expected return on assets is 14%? Ignore taxes. I wish we could do that, but sadly we can't. However, we have to do it for the sake of answering the question. Let's use a nice pink today. What do we know? Well, let's see. We know the following. Return on assets is equal to 0.14. We know that the debt financed is equal to 0.3. We know that the weight of equity is equal to 1 minus the weight the debt financed, 1 minus the debt financed, which in turn is 0.7. And finally, we know that the interest is equal to 0.09. Now that we have that, we know that the formula to solve for return on equity is the following. RA, which in this case is the return on assets, is equal to WD, which is the debt financed, multiplied by RD, which in this case is the interest, plus WE, which is the weight of equity, multiplied by RE, which is the expected return on equity. Now that we have this formula, let's plug everything in. 0.14 is equal to 0.3 multiplied by 0.09, which is the RD, plus the weight of equity, which in this case will be 0.7, multiplied by return on equity. Now that we have this, this will be significantly easier. I'm going to assume that you all know how to solve for a variable in a, in an equation that consists of only multiplication and addition. So I'm just going to tell you that if you plug it into your calculator, we'll know that RE is equal to which in turn becomes 16.14%. Is this one. Calculate the WACC for a firm that pays 10% on its debt, requires an 18% rate of return on its equity, finances 45% of the market value of its assets with debt, and the tax rate is 35%. Okay. No. And what we know is that the interest rate on debt, interest rate of debt is equal to 10%. We know that the tax rate is equal to 35%. We also know that the after-tax cost of debt is equal to the interest rate on debt subtracted by, I mean, multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate, multiplied by 1 minus the tax rate, which in turn is equal to the interest rate of debt is 10% multiplied by 1 minus 35%. Which when you put it in with proper decimals, so 0.1, multiplied by 1 minus 0.35, you should get 0.065 or 6.5%. Excellent. Additional things that we know. We know that the cost of equity is equal to 18%. We know that the weight of debt is equal to 45%. And we know that the weight of equity is equal to 100% minus the weight of debt, which in this case is equal to 55%. Excellent. Now that we have that, we can start calculating for the WACC, the weighted average cost of capital, which is equal to the after-tax cost of debt multiplied by the weight of debt plus the cost of equity multiplied by the weight of equity. And when you plug, and when you write that down, it's going to be, open parentheses, 0.65 multiplied by the weight of debt, which in this case it is 0.45 because it is 45%. Close parentheses, plus, it requires an cost of equity of 18%, so 0.18 multiplied by the weight of equity, which in this case is 55% or 0.55. You'll plug that into your calculator and you should get 0.12825, which equals 12.83%. And for the final question, this will be the greatest send-off ever for an entire quarter, this one. What is the amount of the annual interest tax shield for a firm with $3 million in debt that pays 12% interest if the firm is in the 35% tax bracket? To begin, we need to find out what we know. And in this case, we know that the debt is equal to $3 million. We also know that the interest rate is equal to 12%. And we know that the tax rate is equal to 0.35, otherwise known as 35%. Up next, we need to know the formula. And the formula in this instance is interest is equal to debt plus interest rate. Yes. So in this case, it's going to be $3 million multiplied by the interest rate, which in this case is 0.12, which is equal to 36, no, $360,000. $360,000. So to get the annual interest tax shield, we need the interest multiplied by the tax shield. Well, we know that they're in the, my bad, not the tax rate, the tax bracket is 35%. We know they're in the tax bracket of 35%. We also know that whatever tax bracket you're in is your tax shield. Therefore, we take 360,000 multiplied by the tax shield, which will be, in this case, will be 0.35, and that will be equal to 126,000 dollars. And that is your annual interest tax shield. Oh my gosh. That's all of them. That's all of them. That's the entire three practice tests in one go. I wanna thank you all so much for watching. I wanna thank you for putting up with me for an entire quarter of university. And from, for me, I say have a great summer break. But before we celebrate, I'm gonna need you all to pass your exams. Thank you so much for watching.